Welcome, everyone. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is April 30th, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. It's a motion to call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business, gentlemen, we have is a joint meeting with the school committee to make an appointment to the Old Colony representative. I know that the agenda says Mo St. Amen, but we're going to be replacing Justin Broder. He wrote, "I am writing to inform you of my resignation from my position as a member of the Old Colony Vocational School District Committee. With heightened professional demands, I am unable to devote the same time needed to continue to effectively serve as a representative of the Town of Acushnet. And my last day will be April 30th, 2024." And with that in mind, we're joined tonight with the moderator, Mr. Les Dakin. He will be chairing the joint meeting. Mr. Moderator, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you'd like, I can ask to open, make a motion to open the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee and the town moderator for an Old Colony representative appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Board.
We need to open our...
We're going to...
Well.
You can speak and then have them open.
Okay. Yeah, I need a motion for the school committee to open the joint meeting.
Okay, if I can have a motion, please, to open the joint meeting between the select board and the school committee, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now I need a motion to open the joint committee meeting from someone.
I'll make a motion to open the joint meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to have two appointments.
Do we have to make a motion to open the meeting?
No, we just opened the joint meeting.
Okay.
These appointments tonight will be for a three-year term. It must be completed before May 1st, as you know, of any year to comply with our contractual obligation. Now, for the folks at home watching, as of fiscal year 2024, Old Colony had 548 students from the towns of Acushnet, Carver, Lakeville, Metta Poysitt, and Rochester. An annual operating budget of $8.3 million. Acushnet's portion of this is 186 students, 34% of the total student body, and our assessment is 2.4 million. Needless to say, this position has a sizable impact on not only Old Colony's budget, but ours. Before we discuss a vote on the candidates for reappointment or appointment, as the case may be, are there any additional nominations from the committee? None?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to make a correction. I know it says Mo St. Amen, but Mo St. Amen's willing to stay on until we have a fill for him. We're filling a vacancy for Justin Broder, so I'll make that motion.
But my understanding is we, tonight, we have to reappoint Mr. St. Amen.
Just for that short period of time.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
As an end of the basis.
Understood.
Yeah, so tonight before us, folks, we have Mr. Maurice St. Amen for reappointment until we find the replacement. And Mr. Robert Gomes, as a new candidate to replace Mr. Justin Broder, as the chairman mentioned earlier, has resigned, stating due to personal reasons, he can no longer have the time to adequately perform the duties of the position.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reappoint Mo St. Amen.
I'll second that.
This is going to be a roll call vote. From Mr. St. Amen, Selectman Loona.
Yes.
Selectman Gasper.
Yes.
Selectman Hinckley.
Yes.
From the school committee. Ms. Jennifer Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Sarah Gomes.
Yes.
Mr. John Haukroff.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Mrs. St. Amen is appointed or reappointed unanimously. We will now do the same for Mr. Gomes.
Mr. Moderator, make a motion to appoint Robert Gomes to fill the vacated position by Justin Broder.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Selectman Loona.
Yes.
Mr. Gasper.
Yes.
Mr. Hinckley.
Yes.
School committee, Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Gomes.
Yes.
Mr. Haukroff.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Both candidates have been unanimously appointed. I now need a motion to close the joint committee.
I'll so move.
Second.
And now a motion to close the school committee meeting.
So moved.
Oh. So, so I'll move on. To close the school committee meeting.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll just make a motion to close the joint meeting with the school committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in regular session. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, members of the school committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly has requested for some funding from overlay excess. Mr. Kelly, if you'd like, I can turn it over to you. I can just go through it really quick and speak on it.
It expedites the matter, Mr. Chairman.
We're looking for town administrators, looking for, obviously, some funding source for some control pays for the contractual obligations that we have from ratifying contracts. Right now, we have, and these are numbers that Mr. Kelly's comfortable with, ASME, 10,065. Laborers, 14,274. Steelworkers, 39,220. Teamsters, police, 445,750. Managers, 76,55. He's also asking for the board to request an additional 159,990 to use for funding motion of the operating budget to fund the one-time final payment from the Old Colony lease purchase. And that total amount of overlay excess released would be $676,954. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions, comments, concerns, gentlemen? Anything, Mr. Kelly?
Not on that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Annual town meeting.
I ask that this be passed over.
Okay. Passed over. I agree. Can't sign it. It's not finalized, right?
No.
We've got some work to do. So before we start discussion on, oh, Ms. LeBarney Transportation. So I'm just going to jump over to the transportation bond bill.
As you know, this is critical for our Slocom Street project. I just wanted this here for the board to be updated. Tomorrow, I meet with representatives from Representative Schmidt's office and Representative Strauss's office and our opera consultant. Once we finish with that meeting, then we're scheduling a meeting with Senator Montigny's office to make sure that we touch all bases and especially since Rep. Schmidt and Rep. Strauss are retiring, that we want to make sure that that transportation bond bill of $1.5 million and a half is locked up. And now that we're going out, May 1st also is when we go out to publicize the bid for the Slocom Street project.
Mr. Chairman, I was literally on the phone with Senator Montigny before I came in. Not this Friday, but the following Friday. He will be in Acushnet, and so I'm going to bring him to town hall. So, and he's, I don't know if we have to, well, once I pin down the time, we have to post something. If anybody wants to come in and meet with him, but I was going to bring him over to the Council on Aging. Just kind of get him around if there's any stuff on the wish list, we can tack that on and have a chance to speak.
Any help in getting that transportation bond bill funded?
That's number one.
Right.
Release that's been hanging out there for a lot of years, so.
Also, kind of segwaying off that, I noticed that there's an earmark in this year's house budget for $150,000 from Rep. Schmidt and Rep. Strauss for sidewalks and ADA ramps on Slocom Street. And so I'm sure we'll address that with Senator Montigny when he's here.
Okay. I have a question. It's not on my agenda. Avoidance. It's not on the agenda, big guy.
Wait a minute.
My look. Not there.
It's under the annual town meeting warrant.
Right. Do you want me to go through those budgets under the annual town meeting warrant?
Yep.
That's because it's part of the warrant, right?
Yep, so we can prove, put them in the warrant.
Right. So they have a whole list from the town administrators, recommendations for the budgets. So go, just go through them real quick and just say what they have. Select Board, up $3,635, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town buildings, down $35,640. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Benefits and insurance, up $160,321. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, just so everybody at home understands, benefits and insurance is up $160,321, but that includes the schools, right, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, it does. The health insurance and also the property and casualty insurance, workers' comp, and unemployment and Medicare.
Okay, very good. Pensions, up $122,204. Mr. Kelly's got to know subject to change Medicare, but we'll see where that goes. Motion to approve, so.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Accountant, down $5,748. Motion to approve, so.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Assessors, up $5,016. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Treasurer collector, up $18,000. I'm sorry. $11,748. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Technology, up $18,100. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town clerk, up $6,474. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town meeting and elections, up $16,579. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of registrars is up $17,246. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the big increases to town meeting and registrars is postage and is really due to mail-in ballots.
And the fact of the number of elections in a presidential year.
So just those two budgets from an unfunded mandate is roughly up $33,825. Conservation, up $23,098. But that salary, although some of the salary was transferred out of Board Health, we'll see that later. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Planning, down a whopping 108. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Police, $82,096. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Firing EMS, up $50,523. Big piece of the increase was overtime light on being unfunded appropriately for the last five years. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
EMA, up $1,500. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Inspections, which is building department, up $12,545. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Animal control, up $2,471. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
DPW, up $9,863. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Street lighting, up $5100 due to energy increase. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Health, Health Agents Department, up, I'm down, $44,250. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council on Agent, up $4,816. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Library is up $9,239. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Big portion of that increase too is energy. A lot of these budgets have a big increase. I think we went 30% across that for energy. Some budgets, not so much. Other budgets, like the library, pretty significant impact to this because everything, I was unaware of it, everything in that building's run on electric.
It's a walk.
It's, it's, they have a, they have a walk in energy though. So that clears us from that for now. I mean, obviously, we've approved a lot of budgets, gentlemen. Mr. Kelly's working through them all as much as he can. We still have a budget deficit in the realm of, in the excess of 450, like 475-ish right now. We don't know. The school committee's meeting tomorrow night, I believe, to discuss what their budget is going to be, and then they have to meet with FinCom, so we'll see where they come in at. We've had some big increases in a, in a bad year for revenue, so in the process of trying to work out the numbers. It's important. Mr. Kelly, I don't know if you've informed the board, but I think we ought to inform the public that we're trying to push town meeting out two additional weeks.
Two additional weeks to June 17th to give us an opportunity to see if the state figures will clarify at all, and there'll be some addition. We also are looking at waiting for the schools. Out of approximately a million-three increase, the schools are $825,000.
Would you say June 17th?
Yes.
Have you talked to the schools yet?
Yes.
Okay, so that date's available for them?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Put it in my calendar now.
All set? We're all set?
We're all set. We just have to find close to half a million dollars.
I've, you know, I spoke with Mr. Kelly today. I've identified some potential cuts that are non-service or programmatic related stuff. I've relayed it out to him.
Good.
I'm sure that we'll be able to, hopefully, we'll be able to get this done.
Yeah, I've been talking to Jamie too much. I appreciate, you know, the effort that he's put into going through the budgets. You know, I'm basically sitting in the shadows, just figuring out percentages and making sure some of the numbers that we've done for contractual obligations are plugged in and just working with him, backchecking things like that to make sure that we're providing his best we can accurate budget, so.
Yeah, we just have to keep reminding people and support of Selectmen's warrant and budget.
It's a tough year. I think next year will be an increasingly tough year as well. So anyways, the next item on the agenda, I'm skipping over Ms. LeBarney's stuff for now. She can't come in until 5:00. So we got a Lake Street Fishing Tournament authorization. Lake Street Fishing Tournament, June 22nd, 2024, in communication with New Beffet DPI on their written approval. Fishing League stated that they are happy to name the Town of Acushnet as certificate holders for their liability insurance. My only question to Mr. Kelly is, should we be naming New Beffet as well because they're in the water?
The, when we talked to our insurance company, they said, "We insure the Lake Street entity." So it would come through our insurance.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Have we gotten approval from DPI? Because it says on their written approval, but I don't, no? Not yet?
Not yet. Their superintendent was supposed to be...
Who's doing this tournament? Do we know the organization? Is it an organization?
It is an organization. I just can't remember off the top of my head. But I've been in communication with someone named Matt from there. And he says that he travels all around Mass and Rhode Island.
Like other sporting events? Can we be invited to throw out the first fish?
First fish or first line? We're going to get somebody's fish and chuck it back in. So I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to make sure that the city of New Beffet doesn't have a problem with it because it's their water rights, right? They own the water rights. And we have a lease, what is that, 25-year lease for the parking?
Something like that.
It's 25-year lease? So we have the parking, right, the facility for parking and the lease agreement, so I get all that. I just want to make sure that somebody doesn't show up last minute and shuts them down after we've given approval. So, I don't know. Mr. Kelly, what's your advice for the board? Do you think we should hold off on this and wait to see?
Contingent.
Can we, well, all right. Is there a motion to approve the fishing tournament on June 22nd, 2024? Contingent on city of New Beffet's approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now it's all set. So city, whoever you're working with can try to make sure that we communicate communications with city of New Beffet and who are without Matt guy, as I mentioned. All right? And you got a, we got nothing other than ASME MOA.
Mr. Chairman, this is working back to something we did approve at town meeting last year with a new title added to the ASME contract along with facilitating where it sits in that contract. Originally, it was aligned with the administrative assistant, which upon review of the actual job duties is not possible. So it will be placed in the same line of the contract as the dispatchers. So it'll be principal clerk along with the dispatchers and...
My authority is here.
We, earlier when we talked about overlay, there is $10,065 that would be required to fund this. It involves some change in pay grades for dispatchers and also adding the principal clerk as a position.
Good. Still on, any questions?
Good. Thank you, Bob, for your work on this.
Thank you. So, motion to approve? Motion to approve?
No, we just had to, we'll wait and now when we get the MOA signed by ASME, then we'll present it to the board.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's fine. Well, you got to finalize that for the warrant, right?
Yep.
What's, everybody needs to, that stuff needs to be expedited. We don't have time to be spinning our wheels with stuff like that. We just, they need to do everything they need to do to get it expedited back to our office so that we don't waste your time, my time, or anybody else's time.
Now that we've got a funding source.
Correct. All right? We got Teamsters MOA back in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, there is a wording issue. We're going to talk with representatives of the police. I think it's just a glitch that one word was left out, but we will make sure.
That is correct. And it's been voted on twice before by this board with that one word.
Yes, I did speak with, with Jeremy, and it was, yes, and it was clearly inadvertent. And he'll talk to you and resolve it.
All right, good.
I got, I got copies of it. It's on tape, so as long as he says the shop steward is good, we should be good. All right? Steelworkers, I'll postpone that.
Mr. Chairman, their vote, their, the MOA is being presented to them tomorrow. So as long as they sign it, then I feel that then it can be presented to this board. We'll make sure, but I want to see the exact wording after they've ratified before I present it to the board.
I understand. We'll put that on the executive session, Mr. Kelly.
Yep.
In case there's any part of contract negotiations, it's might, it's always going into executive session for that, so. All right. That's that. Oh, boy. Here's the bad news, gentlemen. So from the treasurer collector, she's looking for an amount, Bristol County Retirement sent an invoice for three employees that were out on military leave. According to Master General Law, to keep our employees whole, the town must pay the required pension portion for these employees. And she's looking for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of $13,059.64. As you know, gentlemen, those are three of our police officers that were out on military leave. We don't have a choice.
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So then, I'll get through all this. We get from the fire chief, necessary repairs and maintenance of the fire department fleet of vehicles. There is a current deficit of $7,616.90 due to repairs that occurred throughout the year. The fire department is also in, has an estimate, FPR, an additional repair to the primary engine squad two in the amount of $7,352 to replace the transmission control module. Also, the fire department is waiting on an estimate to repair the issue between the diesel exhaust system and fuel injectors on rescue one. These repairs are necessary to keep the fleet in service and operational. So this is a fire engine, $12,000. It's one of our fire engines. We bought it in 2007. I remember that conversation correctly from the chief, and we had a transmission control module go on it. That was one of the expenses. The chief then brought the engine back to town and found out that the water pumping system wasn't working properly because of when the batteries were disconnected from the transmission control module. It affected something throughout the chassis, which is the transmission is Allison's problem. Then he went, came back, and it's not pumping water accurately. And it's because the batteries were disconnected and something happened to control modules on the chassis system, which is owned by International. So now the truck's sitting in Foxborough at the International facility for repairs on that end of it, which isn't good. It's unfortunate, but it is an $18,000 repair. So is there a motion to approve $18,000 reserve fund for the fire department?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then it gets worse. The chief is looking for $17,000 for reserve fund transfers for a blown engine in an ambulance, which isn't good news. But that's what he needs. I'm submitting the one amount of $17 to replace the engine in Rescue One, 2016 Ford F-550 ambulance. There is a mechanical issue with the truck, and the only remedy is to replace the engine similar to the issue with Rescue Two two years ago. So these engines have a 6.7-liter Ford motor in it. And the diesel engines, and because of the fluid, special fluid, they have to dump into the diesel fuel tanks. It's burning up engines, and the 6.7-liter Ford engine is known to be trash. So it's extremely unfortunate. It's even more unfortunate that town meeting and this board got an ambulance approved at the prior town meeting. The unfortunate part about that is the wait is two to three years. So the chief is working with another company. He's identified another company. He's trying to see if this company that we ordered the ambulance from town meetings approval last year, if they can't meet a deadline because they're having problems with chassis from Dodge and da-da-da-da-da. He's got another company that he's looking into to see if they can do something because they're rapidly building ambulances for other people. So he might be able to maneuver, but neither here or there. The two ambulances are bread and butter for that department. Roughly 50% of fire is funded from the EMS reserve receipt account, and that's accumulated from ambulance. So we desperately need our ambulances, not only for our own residents, it's a huge revenue for the town. God bless our fire and EMS workers. They do a great job, but we need to keep it up and running. And unfortunately, we're going to be down for several months with this ambulance. And unfortunately, we're gonna be down for several months with this ambulance. That's the bummer. But we need to do it, so. It's a big hit, it's thirty-five thousand bucks in total for the, for the fire EMS, but it's an absolute necessity. So is there a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars to replace an engine in our ambulance?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Alright. Mr. Chairman, if I may, on that same vote, um, I sat down with the chief the other day and he's doing a really good job at putting together a preventative maintenance plan. I think a lot of the history and knowing what these engines are capable of and what they're not capable of, I think putting together a plan to make sure they maintain properly will help hopefully prevent something like this in the future. I don't wanna say it's gonna guarantee it, but if you stay on top of the maintenance and there are some fixes for the various problems with the six-heavens and he's looking into them, so I just wanna say thanks to Chief Fireman for thinking about the future as well.
Yeah, I think that's, so when you're running a fleet of vehicles, right? Whether you're police, fire, DPW, with a fleet of vehicles, maintenance is everything, right? You and I have been in the business long enough. You don't, you don't do your maintenance, preventative maintenance, you're gonna have crap.
Yep.
Hey? So I think it's great that he's developing that plan for all of his fleet. Um, and keeping maintenance log, I talked to him about that a couple of years ago as well to try to start developing that log. So I appreciate that he's actually following through with it. He's gonna keep everything up to par and keep everything a good work and order. That's that. The, uh, Mr. Kelly's got stormwater bylaw review. I know that the planning board and CONCOM and Florida Health Chairman, all three chairman from those three committees and boards had a Zoom meeting together and, and went through some changes that were made and they all seemed to approve the changes. We just don't have a final copy in front of us to say.
Mr. Chairman, the planning board sent a memo to us. The Board of Selectmen about an hour ago.
Wow.
Writing, uh, I am writing to your office regarding the planning board's endorsement of the stormwater management bylaw at town meeting. The planning board has conducted one public hearing for this article. The public hearing was conducted at six P M, April twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four. At the public hearing, the planning board voted unanimously, three F's, two E's, and to endorse the article for town meeting. The staff has not had a chance to look over the actual article. If we have any recommendations to the board, I ask if we are allowed to present it at the minutes meeting.
What staff? I, I got a copy of it, but I haven't looked at it 'cause I've been busy with other things with you, um, Jamie. So as you know, right, I think everybody knows how much I'm here, doing what I'm doing, but, um, yeah, we'll take a look at it. I know everybody else seems to be.
There's one sentence I wanna look at and then we'll.
Yeah, I think they discussed that too. I think they were pretty happy with that change. It had to do with.
A and R.
A and R, that's correct. And I think they were happy with that language, so. Alright, we got, uh.
The MOA town planner, uh, we passed the budget today, so I could send that off to, uh, the fact that you have going to present the planning budget with the provisions that we needed to comply with the MOA. I'll send that to me at a point and they probably, hopefully they'll have something back to us at the next meeting to sign.
Okay. You go out to advertise it?
They'll, they'll go out to advertise at that point. Everybody was waiting on the, uh, funding determination from both sides and.
Yeah, we just gotta wait for town meeting, but it's okay. They can go out and advertise by the time we get anything and then you guys screen and all of that stuff, candidates and all of that, we'll be by town meeting, so.
Yep.
We'll have the go-ahead at that point, right?
Yep.
Alright, very good. Here we have, uh, DPW, new highest vacant water positions, Josh DeMello and David Giffitt. I had a conversation with Mr. Menard, DPW director, Ms. Kathleen Silva. And this is a, uh, two needed positions. They're currently funded in the water, um, account. So Josh DeMello to replace the open position that was recently vacated by Justin Mines. His position is fully funded in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Dave Giffitt to replace the open position that John Westgate held, but has retired in the past year. The DPW has been lucky to keep John in the water department to complete all water testing as necessary. The plan is to have Mr. Giffitt replace Mr. Westgate. The, the salary changes allow a small portion of the salary to carry to keep Mr. Westgate on board, to train Mr. Giffitt to do all the paperwork for water testing and things of the like. And, you know, introduce him to the folks up at DP, that suite agency. Um, so he'll get acclimated that way. We'll figure out how long the board could decide how long we wanna keep Mr. Westgate on based on how well Mr. Giffitt, um, trains and progresses with his training. Um, we'll figure out what we need to do, right?
Yep.
And we could let him go into retirement for good. So is there a motion to appoint Josh DeMello and Dave Giffitt to the water department?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, town administrators report, Mr. Kelly?
It's all the budget, that's all I've been doing.
I know, I get it. It's, uh, it's crazy, but, so Ms. Labonte's.
Uh, one, one quick announcement. Uh, the annual open enrollment for health insurance is, starts on May one and it continues to May twenty-four.
Okay, we don't qualify.
But, uh, I just take the opportunity to make sure that all our employees know we are sending out, uh, a communication to all employees that are eligible.
I just wanna, um, selectmen's announcement, I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen. You approved the Board of Selectmen's budget with my, um, part-time town administrator assistance position. So thank you guys very much for, just joking. Just joking. I'm, I'm trying to like kill some time. It's four forty, Ms. Labonte said she can't make it till five o'clock.
She said she'll put a sign up, so she'll be here shortly.
Alright, is there a motion to recess?
So moved, second.
All those in favor? Now, back from recess, is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Ms. Labonte, the town clerk is here to join us for a couple of issues for elections and election hours. We will discuss election hour reduction, her proposal first. Welcome, Ms. Labonte.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, as you all know, the election is scheduled for May eighteenth. Um, and what you people may not know is that we do not have any contested races. Um, the only other time that this has ever happened since I've been here uh, was back in twenty-twenty during COVID and, um, we did reduce the hours, um, down. Um, what I did was I kinda gave a comparison. There's a couple of reasons that I recommend us reducing the hours. Typically, it would be eight A M. to six P M. Um, not, first of all, it's always a struggle to get, um, election people. And I do have to say the senior center has been very helpful in referring people over. Um, it's a long day for people, specifically if no one is coming in, if it's gonna be very quiet. Um, we did see with the twenty-twenty, we did not have a lot of traffic. Most of the ballots were processed through early voting, which was through the mail. Um, so I recommend the reduction of the hours, um, for that reason. Um, and also it's a cost savings. Um, it may not be huge, but right now we're, we're looking at every penny that we have. And if we can save two thousand dollars on an election or three thousand dollars on an election, that's, the town's better for it. Um, my proposal originally was to go down to six hours because I thought that that was the minimum hours that we had to be open. Um, but I found out that after COVID, it is a minimum of four hours that we can be open. So I did the calculations. Um, I did, um, if we were open regular scheduled, uh, the cost of, now keeping in mind, this is only payroll, not anything else, not the electric or the heat at the school, anything like that. Um, it cost us roughly five thousand sixty dollars to run the election. Um, if we were to close the polls at two o'clock, which was my original proposal, um, we would save, uh, just about a little under fifteen hundred dollars. If we closed the polls at twelve and did eight to twelve, um, we would be saving roughly, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars. So in the grand scheme of things, it may not mean much. Um, but with vote by mail, we have picked up so many more people that are now voting by mail or that they've requested a ballot. Um, I have already sent out precinct one and we are getting so far a fairly good response back and I just sent them out on Friday. Um, so that's hopeful. Um, one of the things that I did mention to the chairman earlier is, uh, if people know that there's no one on the ballot, they're less apt to wanna go out and vote because they know that it's only the incumbents that are on the, the ballot. Or if it's a new candidate, they're not running a po- unopposed, um, opposed. So, uh, with that said, you mentioned you had some comments.
I did, because when we first talked, I was like, you know what? I, I, this is the last Saturday for town elections.
That's correct.
Right?
Right.
And then I started thinking about it when I was home getting ready for the meeting and I started thinking about it and I was like, well, if this is the last time for Saturday, and I'm, I'm fine with the eight to two, right? Changing those hours from eight to two from the eight to six, I think it makes a lot of sense. Six hours instead of the, you know, ten hours, whatever it is, right?
Yeah.
So I said, you know what, that makes sense. But then we talked, had a conversation about the eight to twelve and I started thinking about it and I'm like, wait a minute. This, this, there's a lot of people that don't do vote by mail and there's a lot of people that do work seven to noon on Saturdays.
Yeah.
So I, I would be shutting those people out on their ability to vote and I just don't feel like that's the right decision to make for the working families that wanna go vote and they're gonna show up at twelve-thirty, quarter of one and everything's closed.
Yeah.
So with that said, fam, I just thought about it from that standpoint and I said, you know what, I think eight to two is fair.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I don't wanna shun anybody out and, and take away their right to vote on the last Saturday that we're gonna have elections because it's going to town meeting, changing to Tuesdays, I believe?
Uh, yes, Tuesdays, the last April, last Tuesday in April.
Last Tuesday in April. So this is the last Saturday, uh, I, I'm good with eight to two, but I, I firmly believe there are probably gonna be some people. I could be wrong, but I don't wanna be that person that takes away the right to vote for the working, for the working family, right?
Right. Let me also add in one thing that sometimes gets forgotten with this vote by mail and early voting, that there is still absentee voting that can still be done in our office up until five P M. on the Friday before the election.
The message is getting out.
Yeah, I guess so.
No, the message is, no, the message is just getting out late, right? We're, we're, it's May first tomorrow, right? So we're talking a couple of weeks away and I just, for the last Saturday rodeo, like, I, I'm, I'm great with the eight to two.
Yeah.
Um, but I just don't wanna hurt anybody and take away their right to vote. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm against those mail-in ballot things, right? I, I understand the early voting for people that are doing different things with their schedule, the absentee ballot, things like we used to have, but this mail-in thing, it's costing us. I think you had two election budgets, the registrars and town elections. I think I run it off, it's up thirty-three, thirty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
For, all because of elections, it's basically an unfunded mandate from the state, right? All this, this mail-in crap and they're not funding it, so, um, I don't know. I'm just not a fan of mail-in votes, right?
Yeah.
Early voting, absentee, like we've always had great, but other than that, I, I think, in my personal opinion, I think staying at the two's fine.
Okay. I am good with, with either one, with any of them. Uh, I just, I know that things are.
Six doesn't make sense anymore on a Saturday, right?
No.
I'd be the first to tell you, and I think any one of us that stood out there on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, you know, after the three o'clock, you know, you might, you might have a few stray people walking through, but you're basically standing there talking to yourself because there's nobody really coming through the doors, right?
And that was with contested races.
Correct.
So imagine without, without, um.
Yep, I got eight to two, I'm fine. If that's fine with the board.
Yeah, eight to two makes sense to me and just to touch base on that, I know it's uncontested. But as somebody that spent my entire adult life working on Saturdays,
Yeah.
having a couple extra hours, even if it's uncontested, I'm the guy that always showed up and voted for the uncontested races just to vote.
That's fantastic.
And there's a lot of people that do feel that way.
Yeah.
Whether it makes sense, we'll find out on that Saturday, I guess.
Right.
I, I, I'd have to agree with the two P M.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to put the options out there.
Do you need a motion from this board?
Yes.
Is there a motion to have Ms. Labonte hold the Saturday elections? May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from eight A M. to two P M.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this warrant is good.
That warrant is good, yes, yes.
So now I'm gonna take you over to the annual town election warrant agenda item from Ms. Labonte. Um, in the name of the Commonwealth, hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town who are qualified to vote in elections, to vote at precinct one, Acushna Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road. Precinct two, Acushna Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road. Precinct two A, Acushna Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road. Precinct three, Acushna Elementary School, eight hundred Middle Road. On Saturday, the eighteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-four, from eight A M. to two P M. For the following purposes, to cast their votes in the local election for the candidates for the following offices, local offices. Selectmen, one opening, three years. Assessor, one opening, three years. Board of Health, one opening, three years. School Committee, one opening, three years. Commissioner of Trust Funds, one opening, three years. Commissioner of Trust Funds, one opening for the remainder of unexpired terms set to expire April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Planning Commissioner, one opening, five years. Planning Commissioner, one open for the remainder of the unexpired term set to expire April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six. Cemetery Board, one opening, three years. Trustee of Free Public Library, one, two openings, three years. Park Commissioner, one opening, three years. Housing Authority, one opening, five years. Is that all you need, Ms. Labonte?
Yes, I would like to add in, if there is anyone that is interested in, uh, writing, having a write-in campaign for any of the openings, that I ask that they please give me a call, um, or stop by the office. Uh, last year, I believe it was last year, we had an individual that, um, attempted to run a sticker campaign, but had not contacted my office. And unfortunately, the stickers that she was using were not compatible with our machine, so we had to tell her to, that we couldn't accept them. Um, so if we can talk about it beforehand, I can make sure that if we're doing a write-in campaign and we're gonna do stickers, that they're the proper size to, for the ballots.
So you could, I mean, you could do a write-in, if you have ten people vote for you, you're in.
Right, right. The other thing that you need to be wary of is if there are two people in town with the same name, and I'll use, actually both of you. Um, if somebody just put Kevin Gaspar or Bob Hinkley, um, we can, we can assume that they're voting for one of you. Um, but it could be that your son or, you know, another family member that has the same name, um, wants to vote too.
I didn't vote for him, I voted for his dad, yeah?
Yeah.
I did too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'm just making sure that you have the full candidate's name and if there's someone else in town with that name, that you use their address as well.
So, can we have a vote? Yep, Mr. Motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So there. Thank you very much, Mr..
Thanks, Pam.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Pam.
All right, so gentlemen, we've gone through everything on the agenda. I'll run back to selectmen's announcements if the board has anything to say.
Still digging in on the solar project involving the fire station.
Okay.
To make sure what their, it's called a Schedule Z, it's the form that allows them to do their solar system and connect it with the grid. So I'm waiting to find out how many major numbers are attached to it and that'll give me a little bit of a better idea and when I get some info, I'll update you.
Okay, excellent. Selectman Warner?
This past weekend, Haven and Cushing at youth baseball had their grand opening. Again, just a fantastic job by the league, Chad and Matt Pont, but really Mike Ashley, who keeps that field, that whole complex, it is by far the best baseball park in the whole area. I mean, it's absolutely incredible, everybody just raves about it, so thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, for representing the Board of Selectmen. Unfortunately, that week I had a conflict in my schedule, last minute, one that I could not change, so I appreciate your attendance there as well. All right, no further business by the board. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.